And ask the clerk, oh, for a second. I'm gonna ask the clerk to do roll.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Here.
Mayor Gatewood?
Here. All right. And I'm gonna ask the clerk to read the video recording and play by schedule.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, January 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, January 8th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right, great, thank you. And now I'm going to ask Ms. Siri Pulipati to go ahead and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and now, if you would, can I get from our religious, Rancho Cordova Religious Council, Travis Kimball, from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, to give us an invocation?
Our dear heavenly Father, we ask a special blessing on this proceedings tonight. We pray for guidance on the city council, all those that are working diligently in our city to find solutions to problems, especially in these difficult times of COVID. We pray for those affected by COVID in any sense, physically, emotionally, spiritually. We pray for all those that are working to find solutions, frontliners, and those in the healthcare industry. We pray that we can continue to find ways to interact and be, to help each other and serve each other in these times. And we are grateful for all those that are efforting in these proceedings. And we give thee thanks for a new year and the hope that it brings in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
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 Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker's card to the city clerk for the items not on the agenda. If you are joining us by Zoom and you want the public comment, please use your raise hand feature that's over in the right corner. Go ahead and click that right now. If you're participating by telephone and you want to comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, you have to wait by the clerk to call on you, and she will then click the button and allow you to speak. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes at less. State the name of the community they reside in. Under provision of California State Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate actions on any item not engendized unless it is demonstrated to be of the emergency nature or a need to take immediate action arose from posting this agenda. All right, so do we have any speaker cards?
We do. I have two speaker cards, Mark Berry and Helen Bashaw. And I also see that in Zoom, we have Angel Ball raising her hand as well. So we'll start with Mark Berry, if you would like to come forward. You'll have three minutes.
I will excuse myself on this item as I suspect it is close to my neighborhood, close to my house.
Yeah, I'm not sure it has to do with the development in particular, Councilman Sanders.
All right, Mark, go ahead.
All right, in that case, I'll hang out.
Happy New Year. And some changes have happened in the council, and I guess change is good. I'm gonna talk about something just briefly here. It has to do with existing easements and access to public right of ways and for public use and connectivity to communities, neighborhoods, and the American River Parkway. In particular, I'd like to address an easement that was granted to the county and then actually got transferred over to the city when the city was incorporated. And that has to do with an easement that goes from Sterling Park Drive, which is still within the city, over to Miradel Rio, which I understand still to be in county property. But anyway, there's a 54-foot irrevocable offer of dedication and a 30-foot hiking easement and a 30-foot riding easement that runs along this parcel. Currently, there's fences across that, a horse corral and then a white rail fence. We've asked the city in September this year to, you know, remove the fences. I mean, people are still using the easement, but the fences are in the way. And I guess since October, there was a response that the city was working on it. Had a meeting this morning, actually, with city representatives, and they said that they were dealing with an appeal to move the fence. I'd like to point out, though, is that in 1973, September, there was an agreement with the property owner that that easement would be granted. They tried to appeal it then, the appeal was denied. They formally granted that easement. In 1987, there was some rezoning done over there. And again, it came back that the design of the land division and improvements will not conflict with the easements. But, you know, today, those easements remained obstructed. Those easements are along some historic routes of the Pony Express Trail, Immigrant Trail, they parallel some indigenous peoples sites. And in 2016, there was a city bike route that went right across these easements as part of the city plan. So the city's aware of these easements. The access to the easements would be greatly appreciated by our neighborhood. And I think the greater American River community, people of Sacramento, people of Rancho Cordova, so that we could have nice connectivity to these parcels and be able to traverse across them without the existing interference, which we believe is illegal and improper. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Helen Bashaw.
I am Helen Wellon Bashaw. I live on Tierra Grande Circle. I want to talk about the great news I consider hearing at the last meeting. And that was every person supports the trees, which is real encouraging because we hope to maintain the trees. And also with capping off of what Mark said, we have the opportunity to provide to our children and the community a historical trail that we mapped out would be about 1.5 miles of walking on that easement. That history goes back 3,000 documented years. Just from that one area, you can see 3,000 years' worth of stuff, starting with the Native Americans and coming up to the Lincoln Highway and stuff. So in this 1.5-mile walk, you see 3,000 years' worth of history. You see where, you can walk over where the California Trail and the Pony Express crossed. You can point to where the Adobe huts were. You can see the vegetable stand on Folsom Boulevard, the building that represents more current history. I'm hoping that everybody is still in gear to support the children, the enrichment of their education, the protection of an easement that will bring historical relevance to Rancho Cordova because very few communities have 3,000 years' worth of history in less than 1.5 miles. So we would like our easement open because we have tours scheduled this month. Thank you very much.
Our third speaker is Angel Ball. And Angel, I'm gonna allow you to speak at this time. And you'll have three minutes. Angel?
Angel, you're on mute. Oh, sorry, I figured it out.
No worries.
Okay. Good evening. Mayor Garrett Gatewood, Vice Mayor Terry, City Council, city staff, and guests. I would like to see if I can get some more information on an article I read in the Sacramento Bee on January 1st of 2021, just three days ago. It was called "Rancho Cordova Residents Have It Made in the Shade." I would like to quote a sentence that I read. "Ethnic groups are sending leaders from throughout the five main neighborhoods that comprise the city to ensure representation and that all voices are heard." I'm interested in knowing who the ethnic groups are and the leaders, and who, what, and where the five main neighborhoods that comprise my city, and what the representation and all voices heard really is talking. Mayor Gatewood, you could give me some more information.
All right. So at this point, we will do council reports. And so I'm gonna look to my newest councilmate, Siri Pulipati.
Well, I had a wonderful New Years with my family, the first in many, many years that we had just as family. And happy New Year to everybody. That's for now. It's a good year to start with, and that's my report so far.
That's great. All right, David, you're up.
Hi. All right. Well, we had an interesting holiday, very unusual, I guess, as many families in Rancho Cordova and our region and the nation and the world. We, you know, I certainly enjoyed the Cordova Community Council lights that were done the week right before Christmas. I may have mentioned this at the last meeting, but that was just an outstanding display. I continue to hear positive comments about that in social media and in person from people. And I think, you know, our ability to adapt and create something new in a holiday when we couldn't do our normal tree lighting is really awesome. So I really appreciate that good work from the great minds of the Cordova Community Council. The New Years was interesting. I think the amount of fireworks on New Year's Eve was pretty astonishing. At midnight at my house, it was a constant, we had windows open just for the heck of it, constant roar of fireworks. It was just sort of like one blast after another, as if you were at some major fireworks display. It seems like there's a cultural change happening in not only Rancho Cordova, because I hear it from leaders all over the state, and to some extent the nation, that people are using fireworks for birthday parties and just for the heck of it to do something. Maybe it's COVID-related, but it seems like it's been going on longer than that. But the New Year's Eve was pretty amazing. And of course, we're all headed for a better 2021, right? Because it couldn't be worse. There's really no, there's really no alternative.
Really? You had to put that out there?
Yes, absolutely. I am a scientist. I'm not afraid to tempt the fates that way. I've got a lot of work ahead of me, actually. I will have some leadership role at CACOG. We've had enormous turnover on that board. And I'm sort of one of the, believe it or not, most senior members at this point of the CACOG board and part of a small group of past board chairs. So there will be a leadership role there. I know we will have an effort undertaken that I will chair that will work on trying to find solutions for regional corridors, old commercial corridors, and the fee structures that often inhibit development along those corridors. That's a continuation of work from last year, but a real focus on agencies that are engaged in charging those fees, you know, the sewer agency, SMUD as a publicly-owned utility, et cetera. And what can we do to get those guys on our side instead of in a blocking position for development and redevelopment along those old corridors? I also have, of course, leadership roles with the National League of Cities. Chair, I'm chair of the Transportation Committee this year. I'm on their board and their executive committee, which is a weekly responsibility. And I'm on the Board of the League of California Cities. So I've got a pretty full plate for 2021, really looking forward to it. Of course, I'm also still president of the Rancho of Athletic Association. And I've got a one-year term as board chair for the Cordova Community Council, having lost Larry Stafford, our long-term board chair last year. I agreed, as I was past board chair there from nearly a decade ago, to step back into that role for a year as they restructure and expand that board and also look for the next board chair. So with that, that is my report.
Excellent, thank you. Linda?
Well, I can say that the only celebration we did, as David said, was to drive through the wonderful light display at the mine shaft that the community council put on. Other than that, we were not with family. Everybody did their own thing in their own home shelter place. And I think on New Years, we were in bed by 9:30 or so. Other than that, happy New Year, everyone. We moved, and I can't find anything. That's my report.
All right, Donald, you're up. I'm Vice Mayor Donald.
Um, I'll keep it brief. I too enjoy the light festival that the community council did. I know we had an appointment, but I can tell you that line clearly, there was no way that those were just appointments. So kudos to everybody that put that together. It was a really big draw. What was really cool about it, I think, was the fact that you could see it from the highway. And so I had a lot of people emailing me, asking me what that was, that they could see from Highway 50 as they were driving into Sacramento or up to Tahoe or something like that. So the visibility of doing stuff at that site, I think, is fantastic. I did want to just, and I don't normally make a habit of doing this, and my colleagues that have served with me for a while know that I don't like to comment on public comments that we just heard. But I did just go and find that story that Angel was referring to. First off, it didn't even make it to the electronic version on the SAC Bee's website, so I had to find it on Press Reader. But it's referencing our community engagement programs that Lori Ann and our Neighborhood Engagement Team are working on. And I think it really is more of a typo because it's not from the five neighborhoods that represent the entire city, which is kind of what they're referring to here. There's five neighborhoods that we're working with currently through the Neighborhood Engagement Program that collaborate on community projects. And so in reading this story, they kind of overblow, like, how much of the city is actually being worked with through that program.
Thank you, thank you, Donald. I was actively searching here myself, trying to figure what that reference was to.
If you Google it and you type in "made in the shade Rancho Cordova", it'll come up with something called Press Reader, which will give you the printed versions of, but not everything that's in the printed version ends up online. And the way that this story was written, they're trying to write a nice piece about the city and a lot of things that we're doing. They slipped in there a little bit of a description about our Neighborhood Engagement Program. And it isn't necessarily ethnic groups or targeted neighborhoods that are representing the five main neighborhoods, which is what they say in there. There's five neighborhoods that we're working with, I believe, right now, and we're expanding that program. That being said, kudos to Lori Ann and all of the great work that they're doing. And this story is actually really glowing about our tree programs and a lot of other great stuff. There haven't been a whole lot of meetings just yet as far as boards and commissions since the last time that we met. But let's see, Air District will meet later this month and begin the process of its budget. I had a meeting this morning with the executive director, David, just like you, the Air District, of 14 members, it lost five. So a third of the board is turning over. There's gonna be some discussion about who's gonna be the next chair. It may stay the same, I don't know. But it's supposed to move to the county next, and that would be Sue Frost. And I know she's gonna be taking over chair of the county board of supervisors, so I'm not sure that she's gonna want to tackle that just yet. But I'll just share that, because I serve on the budget and HR committee or whatever is negotiating committee at the Air District, but I'm sure you're seeing this with everyone else. There was a prediction of a pretty stiff deficit for the end of 2020 that didn't really materialize. Things look a little bit better than they did, but a lot of it is baking in funding from the state and the state baking in stimulus funds from the federal government that didn't come. And so as we all look at these boards and commissions going into 2021 and setting the budget sort of next fiscal year, I think a lot of the pain that we expected to come didn't materialize because of the CARES Act and a handful of other things that, you know, rent moratoriums and eviction moratoriums and foreclosure moratoriums that really, a lot of the things that people were predicting in the second half of this year that were gonna come from the pandemic, unless there's some sort of other federal action beyond what they just did last week, we're gonna start to have to get prepared for those realities. I don't think in Rancho that's necessarily the case because of Measure R, but in a lot of government jurisdictions, the Air District is no different, we're gonna be facing those realities in the next three to six months as we prepare for our other budgets.
What do you think the blowback's gonna be to us when they don't have the $130 million at the county anymore?
Well, in my opinion, what, you know, and the way that, I guess now, I guess he's still the county administrator, but the way that they explained it and even what they did kind of at the last minute was they papered over this year's budget deficit with that funding. So you would expect, without more of that funding like that, that they're gonna be sitting in the same place that they were six months ago, right? You know, I think the Air District's gonna be a little unique in the fact that probably unlike any other policy, policy change or shift, you're going from an administration that essentially didn't want to have an EPA exist and, you know, put EPA administrators in there that were basically anti-EPA and withdrew from the Paris Accord and a lot of other things. And now you have an administration that's coming in that appointed a former, you know, Secretary of State as the envoy to the environment. And so what funding and focus is in, like, the Air District, that there may be additional resources at the federal level may buoy some of that, but you're gonna see with a lot of them, whether it's the county or the Fire District or anybody that we work with, that we've been very good, I think, at kicking the can. And with a lot of stimulus, I mean, the CARES Act and a couple of those ones before essentially injected a third of GDP into the economy from the federal government, plus another trillion or so right here at the end. So it's gonna stave it off, but at some point, we're going to see those types of things happen. And we're gonna be talking about it at the Air District. So I'm just bringing that up, but at the same time, we should expect it in just about every jurisdiction that we're on board or commissioned for.
Thank you, Donald.
That is for me. Yep.
All right.
Yeah, that was short, Donald.
Short and very depressing. So awesome, Cordova Community Council drive-through event, love that. Kids were in there. We jumped out of our car and ran over to the thing we sponsored and tried to run around it and take pictures with it. So I just thought it was a cool event, just to come outside and actually think about something that came outside, you know, really stepped outside us. I want to say thank you for setting up the Holiday Stars Drive-Thru Event. Those kids really count on us. Thank you for River City Christian for doing the Christmas mall and getting those 100-plus families. It's changed everything. You can't really do the same thing. But anytime someone's stepping out to try to help our community as a whole through Christmas, and once again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, we just gotta come alongside them. And that's all I got. Cyrus?
Cyrus. Garrett?
Yeah.
Garrett. There is something else that happened during the Christmas season that we really should talk about. The, our Symphony d'Or actually did a concert. It was one of those incredible technical masterpieces that Pete Nowlan pulled off by coordinating all of the musicians in a concert of Christmas music. And they had not only that, but a couple of guest performers. And it was very, it was very short. It was only 30 minutes, but it was a technical marvel. And the Symphony owes, is owed a great deal of congratulations for having put that all together.
Awesome, thank you guys for putting that together for our citizens. So Cyrus, you're up.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't really have a whole lot to add to what has been said. I just wanted to thank you for mentioning the Holiday Star. This was something that was initiated by some of our staff members and our police department and has helped many, many children in our community. And I would also like to wish everybody a healthy and Happy New Year as we enter 2021. That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. All right, consent calendar. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item consideration, all items will be approved in one motion. Are there any council items that we wish to be pulling item?
Seeing none, I will move approval of items, whatever point one to whatever point seven.
I do have a question on one item, but it's a very simple question.
Okay, go ahead.
And it's item four, 9.4. Sidewalk repair.
So I can second the motion without 9.4?
Okay.
Or we can ask my question. I'm not gonna alter this thing in any way, I just have a question.
Well, normally, if you're gonna discuss an item, then we would pass the rest of it.
Go ahead.
All right, so we're gonna pull 9.4. So it's 9.1 through 9.7, and Donald seconded it. Clerk?
Without 9.4, yeah.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge? Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and so go ahead and read 9.4.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract number 2020-218 in an amount not to exceed $283,968.3 with M. Sorry, with M.4 Concrete and Dry Roll, Inc. to construct the 2020 ADA sidewalk improvement project at various locations in the city. And we have Albert Stricker.
Hey, Albert. Thanks for coming in to respond to this simple, relatively simple question. So as I understand it, this is our annual project. This one's labeled the 2020, but it'll be done in 2021, we hope. It's taking a bite of that backlog of sidewalk repairs that we need to do. And obviously, it's $283,000 for this particular bid. But I'm curious, what is that total? And are we making any faster progress towards it than we were before? So in other words, how big is the problem out there for sidewalk repair?
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and councilmembers. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And thank you for the question, Councilmember Sander. And the total deferred maintenance for sidewalks is multimillion dollars, and I can get that exact number for you as soon as I can look that up. One of the challenges is that as we're repairing sidewalk, we're receiving more reports of broken sidewalk. So unfortunately, we're actually staying about steady with the volume of sidewalk and have not been catching up so far.
Okay, that's sort of what I anticipated because you get constant reports coming in. I'm hoping, going forward, that we can make more progress towards that overall goal. I think in past years, it's been on the order of $4 million or something like that for sort of shorter-term fixes. And if we wanted to talk about filling in all the gaps of sidewalks and fixing everything and bringing everything up to standard, that's more like a $50 million problem. that's more like a fifty million dollar problem, as I understand it. So if those numbers are generally correct, you could just give me give me feedback later. Give the council feedback later on the on the specific. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will move item. Item four.
Second.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Aye. All right. The next thing will be public hearing, and it looks like we have one.
And I'll go ahead and read that into the agenda. An ordinance amending sections of the Rancho Cordova Municipal Code related to Title twenty-three zoning code and discussion and direction on future amendments to Title twenty-three.
Is there, go ahead and staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood, members of the council, Darcy Galar with the Planning Department. Before you this evening is a public hearing to review various amendments to Title twenty-three, the zoning code. We would be asking the council to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance. This evening, we're also looking for direction from the city council on potential future code amendments that are related to emergency shelters and digital freeway signage. I'm going to quickly go through the Title twenty-three amendments, and I'm going to turn it over to Stefan Heisler to go over the emergency shelters, then he's going to direct that back to me and I'll wrap it up. So the first amendments we're looking at this evening is amendments related to veterinary facilities. We've had some inquiries to put in a veterinary facility within our O I M U zone, which is our Office Industrial Mixed Use Zone. Currently, the code does not allow that, but in looking at the request to put this use in that zone, it's very similar to other uses that are either permitted by right or require an AUP. So some of these uses would be an indoor fitness center, a hospital, medical offices. So a vet facility does very similar stuff to like a medical office. Other otherwise, we're working on animals versus patients. So staff took a look at that and look at some industry standards and what other jurisdictions do. And it seems within line with industry standards to allow this type of use in this particular zone upon approval of administrative use permit. So we're proposing to make an amendment to the table for that use and then additionally to modify the definition of a veterinary facility to add in the ability to have training in these facilities, which is pretty general when we're talking about vet services. They do medical, they do boarding, and they do training. The next amendment that we're looking at is something that the council directed staff to make a change on over a year ago. We're just now getting around to getting back to this amendment. Just it was put on hold due to the delays with COVID. So if the council recalls, the Court of Community Council had requested a digital freeway sign on the mine shaft property, and council took a look at that and directed staff to go ahead and amend the code to allow an additional sign within our overlay district for digital freeway signs. So the amendments you're seeing tonight would allow language or would incorporate language into the code to allow this additional freeway sign. And this exhibit on the screen, as you can see, the middle area where mine shaft is now hatched in there to show that's where additionally another sign could go. So this amendment falls within the direction we received from council over a year ago. This next exhibit is just merely for councils, just to take a look and and see where the two existing signs are that we have now. That circle is our twenty-five hundred foot buffer, and then in between that is the new mine shaft highlighted area where they potentially could put a sign. Any questions on the amendments before I turn it over to Stefan? Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, Stefan.
No, yes, I have a question. So, okay, so it looks like the distance between the two circles is pretty much another twenty-five hundred feet, linear feet.
It's actually, it's greater, yes.
Okay, but not by much.
I do have another exhibit that will come a little bit later when I bring up an additional discussion item on this that will show where the mine shaft property could actually fit two more signs. If you if Councilmember Budge would like to, I can move ahead to that really quick and then come back.
Well, it just depends on whether you want to go through the whole conversation about the signs now or bifurcate it and come back later.
Let's go ahead since we're on it, we'll move forward and we'll come back to Stefan's piece. So we do have an additional request from Court of Community Council to add an additional sign on the property. When staff brought this to council over a year ago, it was under the impression that they were only looking to do one sign. So that's how it was presented to council was just one additional sign on the mine shaft property. What this exhibit shows you here is that they actually could fit two additional or one additional sign on top of the one they've already asked for on their property. So where the circle buffers overlap, that's where you wouldn't meet the twenty-five hundred foot separation. So it actually comes out because their property is over thirty-four hundred feet in length, they could get two of these signs on the property if they placed them strategically on opposite ends and still meet that twenty-five hundred foot separation from existing signs. So because when staff brought this forward to council, it was only requested to have one sign, and they've now requested two, staff wanted council to have to be fully aware that there is the possibility currently how the code is written to have an additional sign. So you would be you could potentially be looking at four digital freeway signs along the stretch between Sunrise and Hazel. So while the code currently allows it through a use permit process, we wanted council to have full disclosure that it you could have another one and that that wasn't really what was presented initially. So we're just looking for some additional discussion. If council's okay with that, then we'll leave it as is. If there are concerns, we have suggestions that you could direct us to come back and state that they could only have one per geographic region, which would be the two existing and then one on the mine shaft. We could modify separation requirements, but then again, that could impact putting just one additional sign on there. So we will be looking for some discussion upon if you're okay with two potentially being on this property so far along that corridor.
All right.
Okay, so so that brings up an additional question. It looks like these four then basically would be pretty much would be almost pretty much at equidistant down the corridor, which makes sense. However, for the sign on the west side of the mine shaft, where the fifty highway fifty sign is located on the graphic, if you'll notice, that is very adjacent to where the new overpass will be. Now, I've done not billboard permitting, but highway freeway permitting for fast food people. And you know what it's like, Darcy? They get out there and they fly it. They they take a four by eight and they lift up a cherry picker and and they try to see where the sign can be seen from which directions and how high it has to be and and is it visible at all? So has anybody done a, has anybody described the the route of the overpass and looked at its route and its height relative to where this sign on the west side could be located? Can it actually be seen from anywhere?
Yeah, Councilmember Budge, that exercise has not been done. I don't believe Court of Community Council has dug that deep into the potential second location. It was really just for discussion tonight, but those are some great points that you bring up. With the new interchange, it may not be viable to have another sign on that property. So that will be something that will have to be taken into consideration when they determine where they actually want to put their signs.
Okay. So Siri, what do you think about it?
I think Linda has some really good questions, and we need more information on those, but the other two looks good to me.
Well, the other two exist.
Yeah.
So the two in the middle. I I have a question, Darcy. In in is the is the policy still the saying that the operators of these signs would have to remove static signs in order to place these?
Yes, that's still in place.
Okay. And then that's four, that's four to one is still the ratio?
Correct, and we still do have, I believe we have about five still left to be removed.
That's really, that's all we have left?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have been extraordinarily successful in eliminating these signs. I think Linda would probably remember one of the first ones we did is a twenty-three to one deal.
Yeah, well, what I what I had said when we authorized the the second one was I was amenable to more of these with the commitment that the operators remove anything that's left. So if this is, are they all clear channel or out or out front or whoever it is?
They're a mix.
No, no.
They're a mix.
Yeah, and a lot of them are kind of the the small fly-by-night, not small, but the the one-off independent thing.
So I would just throw out there that when these come back for approval, I I'm assuming we still have discretionary approval for them at some point. But my intention would be if if we are trading for these, there are none left. So they have to go get them all.
I think that's probably an impossible request.
It's a great idea.
If they, well, now, David, if they have to get four each and there's only five left.
Exactly.
Then one of them is going to get four, one of them is going to get one. But in the end, if if they want approval, I'm just saying from my vote, if they want approval for both of these, they're all gone in some way. So I'm not saying the next one has to do it, but out of these two, we're getting all of them. So I don't want to hear any, you know, ah, I can't negotiate with that guy, then then that then that sign's not going to happen.
All right, guys, let's take a quick break and have public comment. Go ahead and do we have any speaker cards?
We do have speaker cards.
Oh, you're not?
We still have Stefan.
Yeah, we still have.
Okay, Stefan. It's really tricky when there's no one in the space.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council. For a completely different note, thank you for sort of pausing the other discussion to include this one. We'll we'll go through a brief section on the emergency shelter zoning goals. For this section, really, the goals are to provide some background on the necessity of a rezone for emergency shelters and then also to allow council to discuss and provide direction regarding the selection of one or more zones for a rezoning or for staff to return with additional information. And just to be clear, you know, with this discussion, we're not proposing at this time the emergency shelter. The city has no plans currently for an emergency shelter. We have not received any applications for emergency shelters. And with the strong likelihood that the that city money would be required to do a a an emergency shelter, you would definitely see, you know, another discussion if that if that if an emergency shelter were to be proposed. So really, tonight's discussion is really just focused on meeting a state requirement, and I'll get into that in a second. So just to provide a brief definition of what emergency shelters are, I know there's a lot of different types of homeless housing, emergency shelters, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing and supporting and supportive housing, among others. So really, just tonight, we're focusing on this one specific definition of of housing for emergency shelters. So which includes housing with minimal supportive services. So these are going to be, you know, mayor may not provide food, may not provide supportive services, counseling or job counseling or any kind of training. Also, they'll be limited to occupancy of six months or less. And then also, they cannot deny service to any individual due to an inability to pay. Next slide. So just a little bit of background. So state law requires all jurisdictions to either allow emergency shelters as a permitted use in at least one zone, and permitted means not subject to a conditional use permit or other discretionary action, or to demonstrate how a jurisdiction has sufficient shelter capacity through or through a multi-jurisdictional. I ran out of room on this slide, but essentially, we do not have a multi-jurisdictional agreement. We also don't have, looking at the current homeless population, we don't have sufficient dedicated shelter beds for the number of Rancho Cordova residents that that are homeless. So we we do need to do a rezone. As far as as far as we can tell, we have not completed a rezone. However, this this was included as an action item in our previous housing element from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-one. But from our best efforts, we can't tell if a rezone was completed. And emergency shelters continue to be a conditional use in most zones and not a permitted use in any zoning district. So this is a requirement of state law, but there is an added element of urgency because we are in the middle of completing a an updated housing element. And in order to remain in compliance with the housing element law, we do need to complete the rezone before submitting the final housing element updates. And we are scheduled to meet deadline to submit our updated housing element by May fifteen, but we do need to complete this rezone before then. And next slide. So staff has analyzed the suitability of three zones that could meet the state requirements and criteria for emergency shelters. And these are based on the zones that were identified in the previous housing elements as well as areas that we know would would probably be least controversial. So these are the O I M U, the M one or light industrial, and the heavy industrial or M two. We've looked at these sites, these zones, because they are likely to meet the state's criteria related to sufficient capacity, so having enough space for accommodating the number, the estimated number of homeless residents that we have, available acreage, compatible physical features, as well as location amenities. And next slide. Here you can see a map of where these zones are located across the city. I won't go into great detail, but the red is the O I M U, primarily office areas around the city. M one is in blue, so including many light industrial warehouses as well as some vacant parcels as well. And then the M two parcels, which are primarily the auto dismantling, some larger warehouses, as well as security park. And next slide. So next steps, staff is recommending at this time selection of the M one zone due to the quantity of available vacant land, the close proximity to necessary location amenities, such as multiple transit lines, as well as more compatible physical features than the M two zone. So open for council discussion, of course, but if directed by council, staff would prepare a municipal code amendment to permit at least one zone designated by council for emergency shelters, and we would bring that amendment back prior to our housing elements updated deadline of May fifteen, twenty twenty-one.
I have a question for Steve, Stefan.
Sure.
Okay, so if we were to do a rezone, say if we chose M two as the permitted outright zone, then would we would we be able to write some additions to the development standards for the M two zone, which are minimal, granted, but to do anything to require management of the emergency shelter? How would we control management of the emergency shelter if it were a permitted, an outright permitted use in an M two zone?
That's a very good question. We we do have the ability to set managerial standards, and actually, it is it is a requirement as part of the state law. I didn't want to include it in here to make this more complicated, but we will have the ability to do that. So when we do this zoning amendment, we would we would propose bringing back some managerial standards with that item. We're a little bit limited by the state as to what those standards can be, you know, which criteria you can limit and then how much you can limit them. But what we'll do is probably look at other jurisdictions in the region as a template for what we would include here.
So what I'm really thinking of is the kind of thing like the the management of the people who have been residents at the hotel out by Hazel, you know, no one. You know, no wandering off and, and that kind of thing.
Right. So we could look at parking, lighting, security, onsite staff, those kinds of things.
Okay, 'cause if we could do that, then that makes the, the M1 zone, um, um, feasible. Thanks, Stefan.
Um, Stefan, I had a question. Do, did we get any objections to this rezoning or do we have, how does this go about? Like, let's say, like, if we approve one of these zones, do we need to take into consideration what the tenants and the neighbors have to say about this?
Absolutely. So, so we've been open for public comments. Um, obviously this, this item is kind of a little bit of a short, shorter notice. Um, so, uh, we'll be taking public comment now, we'll be taking comments, you know, until we prepare the zoning amendments, we'll take comments before that item is approved. Of course, that would come to you, I'd probably at a public hearing as well. Uh, so, uh, there will be opportunity, additional opportunities for residents to provide feedback. So far the resident feedback that I've heard is that, um, um, people are somewhat opposed to the OIMU zone and are more favorable to the M1 and M2 zones.
Makes sense.
Donald, what do you, Donald, what do you think?
Um, to me, this is a fairly benign decision to make. We're doing it because we're submitting our, our housing element. The question's gonna become, you know, if, if any facility like this was going to be built, it would probably take a subsidy and a participation from the city. So, you know, I, I don't think anybody needs to be concerned that, you know, tomorrow somebody's, now that we've done this rezone, that somebody's gonna just walk in and say, okay, great, I want to open a, uh, uh, an emergency shelter. They take enormous amounts of subsidies and dedicated funding to do it, um, and none of that exists at the moment. So, you know, regardless of, of what we're doing, we're doing this because we need to satisfy the housing element, which is important when you get in. Um, but ultimately this is, this doesn't create some sort of pending next decision and project, uh, and I hope people understand that.
All right, David?
Yeah, I agree with Donald. This is, uh, this is not, uh, a big deal. It's something the state's requiring us to do. Ironically, we still need to do this even though, I don't know, on a per capita basis, we may have more homeless shelter, space and beds, however you want to count it, than any other community in the region. Um, if you add up Mather Community Campus and Mather Veterans Village.
None of those are emergency, though. That's, if, if we're comparing notes, but yes.
Yep, yep.
I, I would agree with you that we're housing more per capita than most other, but this is, this is an emergency shelter that, that we're supposed to cite.
So it's not like we're a non-participant in any of this space. We're a very active participant in this space. But it's still a, a requirement and obviously there's long, long, long ways to go before something like this would actually happen.
Yeah.
Okay, David, and I, and I agree with you, and, and you're absolutely right. There is no question that for all, everybody's talk, we are the ones who have hosted Mather Community Campus for almost two decades and, or no, well over two decades, three decades, and have now, uh, completed wonderful, um, facilities for homeless veterans. But I, let's just be, let's just be cautious, guys, when we use the, the phrase benign because, yes, it's a state requirement, yes, it's a simple thing to do, yes, it's got to be a part of the housing element, but the unintended consequences would arise if we don't take care of the little details. And that's why I asked Stefan specifically about the kinds of management, um, uh, requirements we could put on it because it is, it is, it is, if you don't care about it, then the logical thing to do is to throw it out in M2. That makes no sense. The logical thing to do is to put it on M1 because they have access to light rail and more access, um, uh, to transportation that could take them in other, to other places that they need to go for services. So, um, um, but we need to make sure that we are going to be able to set up manageable uh, facility that is not an impact on its adjacent, uh, business neighbors. Or, um, and it's not just business neighbors because you look at M1 and you've got, you've got things like the hotels and the sheep herders and, and all those kinds of things. So we just, we just want to make sure that we put the right details into the language.
And I'm sorry, you're saying M2 is your preferred?
M1, M1, M1. Uh, M2?
Can you push it back to the, the picture, please?
Yeah, go back to the zoning. Yeah, purple is M2. You have to call paratransit to get anywhere from there, okay? So if you look at M1, it's, it's along the light rail line. They've all got access to the Sunrise Station. Um, and if I remember correctly, Regional Transit changed the, the bus route so that a bus does connect to the Sunrise Station again, the way it did for, um, until last September.
So we could literally put it in the light rail station as an emergency shelter?
Actually, there's enough parking lot there to do it.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
We could, we could also create this sort of a graphic with slightly more, um, variation in color.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of pink hues and, and, or red hues here. Um, but the OIMU stuff, a lot of that's along the light rail as well.
Yeah, but, but Donald, it's also adjacent to the vast majority of, um, residential between Folsom Boulevard and Highway 50, both north and south sides. And the neighborhoods that it's adjacent to are socially fragile to begin with.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with that.
All right, guys, that's it. Hold on one second. Let's get a little public, do we have any public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have, um, comments so far from five individuals. We'll start with Mary Nessel. Um, following Mary Nessel will be Brian Cooley. Following Brian Cooley will be Shelley Blanchard.
Good evening, Council. My comments are regarding the proposed, um, digital billboard, which I was very distressed to see that you're even considering after the last billboard that you approved on the Naturewood Furniture property, and I was involved in, um, hoping that you would not approve that. So I'm shocked to see that now you're talking about it again. And I strongly suspect that if it was a car dealership or a landscape business asking for another billboard, you'd be saying no. But because it's the Cordova Community Council, you're considering changing the rules so that it will be allowed, and that really makes me angry. Now, I could be wrong, and any one of you are welcome to call me and talk to me one-on-one about this, but when I go online, there is so much information about digital billboards and billboards in general being a distraction and a safety hazard, and I'm shocked and distressed that you all don't see this. There was a study in the country of Sweden where they approved billboards in 2009. They did a study, and as a result of that study and finding out that it's too distracting, they required all the billboards to be removed. They chose the safety of their people over the money that these companies make. The billboard industry is a billion-dollar industry, and they spend millions and millions of dollars a year lobbying and paying, paying politicians to do their bidding. And I hope that you will not approve this digital billboards. Um, as far as public opinion, I've, I read that each year hundreds of communities seek tighter billboard controls because citizens are fed up with billboard blight. Though the industry claims billboards are essential providers of important information, polls reveal that most people see them as ugly, intrusive, and uninformative. Between 1957 and 1977, at least eight polls found that 70% or more of respondents to be anti-billboard. The last state, there are four states currently that ban billboards altogether. The last one was Alaska, and they put it to a vote, and 73% of their citizens voted against the billboards. Um, in my opinion, nothing destroys the character and the natural beauty of our community any worse than these billboards. There's more than 700 communities nationwide that prohibit the construction of any new billboards. Why? Because the billboard control improves community character and quality of life, both of which directly improve or impact local economies. If you were to conduct a vote, I believe that the residents of Rancho Cordova would vote no on any more billboards and encourage you to get rid of every single one that we currently have. So I'm asking you to vote the way that I think our citizens would want you to, and forget about the money, forget about any favoritism based on who it is that's asking you for these billboards this time, and just say, no more billboards, period. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brian Cooley.
Happy New Year, Mayor Gaywood. Council members, Brian Cooley with Cooley and Associates Development Consulting here representing the Cordova Community Council. Wanted to speak, uh, in favor of the staff recommendation for the resolution of the first billboard, uh, from the, per the direction that the council gave staff a year ago. And wanted to speak to the, uh, request of the community council for the second billboard in this area. We're not asking for approval of the second billboard here this evening. It's more direction to go back and work with your staff to study the feasibility of the second billboard of the property. As staff indicated in the report, uh, there's ample spacing criteria along Folsom Boulevard, specifically the Minechat property, for two billboards. The property is 3,400 square, 3,400 feet from east to west. Uh, it's approximately a little over a mile. I used to represent the previous owner of the property, and we looked into the feasibility of billboards, uh, years ago on the property. And even with the proposed interchange that's gonna go through the western portion of the property, there's still several hundred feet west of that towards the end of the property line for the identification of a second billboard if the city so chooses. And so, uh, the work that we would conduct with your staff would be focused on the spacing criteria, the interchange or the interface with the future, uh, interchange on the property so that there's ample spacing for safety, issues with traffic and the, and the construction of it, and as well as the number of billboards that needed to come down to place these additional billboards. The one thing I would say is, uh, your current code requires four billboards to come, four signs to come down for a digital, additional digital billboard to go up. I think to require anything above and beyond that is probably unfair to an applicant that comes forward. We'd ask you to hold to your current standard of fours. We look to evaluate the second billboard. And the other thing I'd remind you is that, uh, both of these digital signs are gonna require a subs- uh, additional conditional use permit before any sign can get a permit to get constructed, and that would require, uh, the color, uh, the evaluation of the color, the, the height, the, the dimensions, the diameter, uh, just the overall aesthetics of the sign. So that would be a subsequent entitlement that each individual digital sign would have to come back and, and get your approval on. And so, uh, again, I would, I would support the staff recommendation this evening. Uh, we'll work with staff on the second billboard in terms of spacing criteria, uh, for safety issues and other standards that, that the city has in this municipal code. And then the last thing I'd just say is, this corridor, uh, even beyond the jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Rancho Cordova, will be, um, there will be proposals for additional signs, whether it's in the city of Rancho Cordova, in the city of Folsom, or the unincorporated county. And there is a finite number of signs that the market will accept along this corridor. And I would just say that, uh, the city has an opportunity to, uh, put an imprint on what those signs look like, on, on how intrusive they are to traffic along the Highway 50 corridor and Folsom Boulevard. And I just think it'd be in the best interest of the city to be able to, uh, take control of that process. Uh, again, the market's gonna have a, a finite amount of signs that come forward, and then these signs do play a vital role in, in Amber Alerts, uh, public information campaigns through the COVID pandemic and other safety issues uh, that do inform the public of events that are going on in the community. And so I would just, again, ask for your support for the staff recommendation. And Shelley Blanchard, the executive director with the community council, is also here to give some background on the, on the community council's request and what it would mean to the organization, uh, for these digital signs. So we'll, we'll open to any questions you may have after that, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
The next public comment is Shelley Blanchard.
Happy New Year, everybody. Um, I'm not going to delve into the technical issues because I'm not, um, qualified to do so other than to, um, share my, um, agreement with the staff of report, which, uh, found that this is a possible, um, and feasible plan that we're proposing. Um, I guess I just want to take one moment, um, to point out that this is a really rare opportunity to give a community partner and a totally 100% local nonprofit organization the opportunity to stabilize resources uh, that support our activities well into the future. I, it has to be enticing, for instance, uh, to think about all the profits of a digital freeway sign going to a national advertising company and instead a bunch of it going to, or a portion of it going to a local nonprofit that does nothing but activities, uh, for Rancho Cordova. And as much as we love our, uh, neighbors in the region, uh, we're, our focus is Rancho Cordova, and that is what we do, period. The fiscal impact on the city, according to your own staff report, is zero. So, uh, what an opportunity for us and what an opportunity for you to help us, uh, grow stronger so that we can do more for Rancho Cordovans and more for you. So, um, on my request on behalf of the Cordova Community Council, is you please instruct your very nice people and your planning staff, and I've appreciated working with them through this, to do what's needed to move these two projects forward, and I promise we will work arm-in-arm with them and you to make sure they are the very best they can be with great results for the residents of Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Our next speaker is, um, by phone via Zoom, or I guess by phone. And, uh, I need just a moment to, uh, bring them on. So to the caller whose telephone number starts with 804, you have been unmuted and should be able to speak under public comment at this time for this item. And you'll have three minutes. Please identify yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so hi all, this is Fiza Mogul from Lincoln Village. I'd like to ask for more time for staff to run one aspect of agenda item 11.1, the emergency, uh, shelter rezoning, um, to run that past the public for adequate review. I have participated in this year's housing element outreach sessions and even submitted written feedback, yet this topic was never presented to us. It is impossible to give informed feedback if aspects of the plan are omitted during public review or updated at the last second. Uh, this housing element-specific item is not even presented as such on the agenda for this meeting. It is couched within the topic of zoning amendments for three separate issues buried in the text. Um, I found it completely by accident. There are now less than 30 days remaining for the public to submit feedback on the housing element, and here we are facing a gap in information resulting from our non-compliance with the 2013 housing plan. I ask that council direct staff to exercise due diligence and ensure that our general public has the opportunity and adequate time to question, review, and submit feedback on any housing element-related changes before the February 1st deadline, um, especially the details missing from the document pertaining to the homeless shelter programming and managerial standards. Um, those, those details are not on the document thems- itself. Um, this is a matter that I know is very dear to many of our residents' hearts, and we should be allowed to participate fully. Um, since the ball was dropped and there is currently no plan in place to help meet the emergency shelter needs of today, uh, why don't we consider using City Hall as an emergency warming, uh, warming center, just that it has served as a cooling center in the very recent past? Um, so please consider that request. Uh, thank you all for your time.
The next speaker that we have on this item is Angel Ball.
Hi, um, I just have a couple of comments. The first one is, uh, Linda, I would like to have heard the rest of what you were going to say about, um, the neighborhood, um, that the blue area is close to and the vulnerability. I also agree that the, um, decisions you're making are part of our future, so the decision should be made, um, with all the facts. be made with all the facts. And I also have a question, I guess, is, does all of the blue area have to be an emergency shelter, or could it be a couple of parcels within the blue zone? I guess you call it an M1. And I'm sorry, this is a part of the emergency shelter zone conversation. And on the electric billboard, I would like to thank Mary Nessel for her thoughtful research, and I do agree with what she's saying about the billboards. Thank you.
And then lastly, we had a public comment submitted via email by Donald Childs that is available for the public in the back of the room, as well as it was emailed to the council, the city attorney, and the city manager's office.
All right, thank you. All right, guys. Linda, you had some other comments. Did you want to go ahead and finish those out?
Why don't we just, why don't we just pick one subject and deal with it at a time? I mean, obviously, the majority of what Darcy said, we agree with, but we specifically want to talk about emergency shelters and billboards. So can we do that?
Yeah, let's do that. So let's start with the first one. Let's do, let's talk about emergency shelters. So what do you guys think about the zoning and where it's at right now?
Hey, so can someone, I'm sorry, can Stephen answer the question that Angel asked on that M1 parcel? Is it going to be the whole rezoning and you, or parts of it will be?
Sure, I can answer that question. So if we were to complete the rezone, we would have to rezone the entire zone, which would mean any parcel would be eligible. However, with the managerial standards that we could set, we have the ability to set sort of limitations as far as proximity of emergency shelters to each other, which would effectively limit the number of emergency shelters that could be located. However, in any case, we have to make sure that we do not prohibit enough emergency shelters that could accommodate the total number of homeless individuals that we have in Rancho Cordova. So we estimate between 250 to 300. So if you ran out of space and couldn't accommodate, you know, even that number, then we would run into issues with the state criteria. But we do have the ability to, to play with that some, yes.
Okay, thank you.
In other words, it has to be the entire zone, but you can't add additional restrictions on that, on how it would be chosen and operated within that zone.
Also, I mean, you know, inherent in this whole process, what we're doing is adding a use to an existing zone, and it doesn't do anything to interfere with the rights or the development standards that are on.
Linda, you've dropped off. Huh? Oh, okay. So can, can the people at home hear Linda? Sweet. How y'all doing? That's good stuff. I hope they're having a good meeting.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, you have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting.
Avenue in North Sacramento was incredibly controversial, and nobody ever seemed to be able to determine whether it was actually full or not full.
Hey, Linda, I'm sorry, Linda, really quick.
The trash and degradation that it caused in the area was huge for the people who live around there, that's why.
Hey, Linda, Linda, I'm sorry to do this to you, but you, we all dropped off, so no one heard you. Can you start over from the beginning?
Actually, I got it all. I was about to say, City Hall dropped off. I heard every word she said.
Okay.
And she made really good points, too, so.
Was it? Were they excellent points?
Yeah, you should listen to the recording.
Great.
Okay, so just to wind that up, the bottom line is, if we choose the M1 zone, and we are able to provide the opportunity for transportation and services to the people who might use the emergency shelters, if we do the, the management standards as part of the development standards that go with this additional use, then that gives us the ability to ensure that it's not a problem for the adjacent business owners.
So that's the key question, right? So how, how do we get agreement or approval or alignment with these business owners? Do we do it before the approval or after the approval?
This isn't, this is just a, this is just a rezone. So again, to approve of a hypothetical project at some point, like Linda said, somebody, somebody, not necessarily the city, but somebody, some developer or service provider, you know, works with a property owner that has a building or has a lot or something like that, and then comes to the city for approval. And at that point, there, there's a lot of other steps in there, probably including funding, that there isn't some sort of manna from heaven. There was supposed to be a half a billion in the state budget this last time to fund some studies and to do this kind of stuff, and as far as I know, that none of that stayed in the budget. They got passed in the fall or over the summer. So all we're doing here is, is, and to, the speaker that commented about the, the housing element, the fact that this wasn't in there, or in the discussions are presented, is, I believe it's because this was something that was overlooked, and we're in the process of finishing up our, our housing element. So this is something that the state requires of your housing element, and they didn't before, and so we have to include a zone somewhere in the city where you could put this type of service. It's, it's just a requirement. And so we have to look at our zoning and, you know, these aren't usually good to put in residential areas or near schools and near a lot of other places and for obvious reasons. And so in looking at the places that we could potentially do it, these are the three kinds of zoning that the staff are saying are the places where these tend to be, to be cited in some way. I, I kind of agree with Linda. I think, you know, in the short term, looking at this, I think the M1 that I see makes the most sense. There's a section there that makes the most sense that obviously is near mass transit, getting people to and from the site, getting people to and from services and other things like that. Because if you put it too far away, then you have a trickle effect of people walking and biking and getting to the site that become very, very untenable and create more of an effect on the surrounding area than if you have it in a place where people can easily get to and get their stuff to and from there.
Right.
So that makes, it makes sense to me, but again, we, we can't pick and choose here at, with this action, we just have to pick a zoning that we already have and say, this will now be allowed use within it. And that, and that doesn't mean that we can't come back to this at some other point if a project that makes sense is in a different site, and we need to look at, you know, a discretionary decision on it, right? Stephen or, or Darcy?
No, this is by right, Donald. No use permit.
Through, through, through the mayor, if I, if I may.
Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Philip Potty, just to supplement, the seat law when it changed, was changed in part because it recognized that having at least some emergency homeless shelters were, was something that was needed within each jurisdiction, and it also recognized that, that by making approval of emergency shelters discretionary, many jurisdictions were effectively prohibiting them.
Yeah, that's true.
So, so the issue is, is really selecting at least some places where, where they could apply for and be able to be built without having to run the risk of the denial that was discretionary. So the time for deciding to answer your question is, is you're deciding the, the general zone and area and criteria by which they would go in, but you're not making a site-specific approval, and the time to have those conversations about which zone they would go in would be when it comes back before the ordinance is adopted.
Fair enough. The one follow-up I had, again, for Stephen, Stephen would be, you know, the whole M1 zone, and like Vice Mayor Donald said, right, so there's some areas which make better sense. So could you narrow down the area of M1 that needs to be rezoned?
We could do that with an overlay. That would be another way of doing this, that would make it a little bit more complicated. Generally not a great idea to, you know, add additional overlays that would complicate your zone, your zoning code overall. And I do also want to highlight that the emergency shelters are a conditional use currently in a large number of zones. This, this item tonight is really just discussion on choosing one where it would go from conditionally permitted to permitted. And as Linda mentioned, be by right, which would mean, you know, looking only at objective criteria.
Okay, thank you.
But it's also not a condemnation of anybody's property theory. That's really important, too.
Yeah.
Got it.
Well, to that point, when we get to the, the billboards discussion, I think that's a, a lot more, at least from the comments that were, that were heard from the public, that there, there's only so mu, so much power we have to prevent things or to take things away from the community. But one, one overlay, because I, I'm guessing, you know, even based on what I was just saying, that, you know, we once decided within, you know, of the proximity of mass transit, and so an overlay that you could do in here is you could also say M1, and it's got to be within 2,500 feet of whatever, or something to that effect, of a light rail station or a bus stop or something like that. So there, right? I mean, Adam, that, that's, that's something we would be allowed to do, right?
As I understand your question, yes.
Okay, yeah. So in, instead of looking at this and saying that, you know, all of these things that are in blue, you can say it really needs to be somewhere that centrally located near, you know, and, and easily accessible to, to mass transit.
Right, yeah, and that's what I meant by narrowing that.
And that's a really, that's a really good point, but I think Donald Adam would agree that if we didn't overlay and we did something like 2,500 feet, linear feet from the Sunrise Station, off the top of my head, I can think of only one parcel in there that is not developed in that, if you draw that circle, and in the M1 zone, and so any.
But, but who's to say that this has to be something that's already developed? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Anything that we adopt has got to be achievable. We can't adopt something that somebody can turn around and say, well, you don't have anything that fits those criteria.
Well, but who, but who's to say that, that whatever this facility is, it has to be something that is developed, that it's not something that would go into an existing space?
Well, I agree, and, and as we've tried to assure Siri, you know, this is a willing buyer, willing seller sort of a thing.
Right.
This is a contract, takes two people to tango.
Mm-hmm, and, and to be, and to be really frank, it's also probably going to take, you know, a lot of government subsidy that probably we would need to help in security in some way. Odds are, if, if a facility like this, I mean, any of the affordable housing sites that have been developed within the city have all taken enormous amounts of resources, staff time, and funding in order to, to be achieved. So the odds that we're not going to have a seat at the table if somebody was to come and try to build a facility like this, because these aren't money-making facilities, right? These are things that take a lot of government subsidy and, and participation. All this is, again, all this is doing, and it's not for communities like ours, because I think David started off with, you know, we have, we have a lot of units housing formerly homeless people in the city. It's not like we're not a good participant. This zoning rule and, and law was to force communities that, that aren't being good, you know, community partners and aren't trying to address this problem throughout the state. So I mean, again, I, I don't see a problem with, with this. I do see, I, I understand that the, the member of the public that commented about this not coming before that, the housing element, you know, public participation, and Stephen, I, I hope that we continue to figure out ways to, to get more public, you know, input into this. I know that we needed to put this in, you know, now because it was overlooked, but that doesn't mean that we can't continue to go out and, and talk to folks about, you know, what they think. I know there's, there was talk about some other parcels that, that might have made sense in other parts of town for this or affordable housing in general and, and arena sites and other things like that. And just because we, we submit the housing element to, to HCD, that doesn't mean we stop talking or working on, on these issues.
Right, good point. I think we've got good discussion on this one, Mr. Mayor.
All right, guys, anything else before we move forward? All right, so let's talk about the second one, which is the freeway sign and the mine shafts. Mine shaft property. Go ahead, Linda.
So I've got a, a comment here. We've, I'm not sure how many times we've sort of kicked this around under the previous owner, and then since he has donated the property to the Cora, Cora Community Council, I know we've discussed it at least once, perhaps, perhaps twice. The, I guess I would urge my colleagues to think about this not in a traditional billboard application way, because as one of the members of the community mentioned, this is not a normal applicant. This is not a, a national advertising firm seeking to, you know, extract some, some resource out of Rancho Cordova. This is basically us. This is our nonprofit sponsor organization looking for a revenue source and a means of communicating both with Rancho Cordovans and the region. As, as you guys might recall, in previous discussions with digital billboard applicants, we have tried to get, we have tried to get a certain amount of time dedicated to Rancho Cordova and to public causes on those billboards, and that has been like pulling teeth. It has been incredibly difficult to get those national companies to participate with us in what we thought was an important way to communicate with the public along Highway 50. This would not be the case with this, with these two, with these two signs. Obviously, the community council would be extremely interested in providing space on those signs for local nonprofits to advertise things going on in Rancho Cordova, and for the city to be able to communicate with our residents using those signs. So I, I just want to caution you guys, don't think about this as some big national advertising firm coming in here asking for billboards, because it's not. The profits stay here, and the message can be generated by us as well as from outside commercial interests. And then the second point is strategically, we got to think really carefully here, because half of this corridor in this particular sign section is governed by the county. If there's a limit on how many of these digital signs, which is frankly just the ne, it's the next wave in billboards, all over the country is seeing consolidation of billboards to a limited number of digital signs on, on corridors. As that happens here, it's either going to happen on our side, or those additional signs are going to show up on the other side, where we would have zero control, zero ability to gain any revenue for local nonprofits, and zero ability to put any kind of a message on those signs. So it could either happen there, or it could happen further downstream in, in Folsom. So my guess is, strategy-wise, we would like to see the community council be successful getting these two, and I, I, because that brings revenue to us, it gets our message out there, and hopefully they will have the ability to take down other signs as they have in the past, as we have in the past, with digital billboards or frankly, any new billboard, because we used to do this for, you get one new billboard, you got to take down old billboards, even the static kinds, we'd made that sort of a deal for. So hopefully we can maintain some flexibility and really kind of watch out for ourselves in our strategic work right here.
All right.
I want to expand on David's argument. I am completely sympathetic with Mary Nessel. I'm one of the high school kids that cheered when Lady Bird Johnson took down all the billboards on the national highway system and planted wildflowers. I, I detest the effect on the aesthetics of the, the local area and the environment, and I particularly object to the
So hopefully we can maintain some flexibility and really kind of watch out for ourselves in our strategic work right here.
All right.
I want to expand on David's argument. Um, I am completely sympathetic with Mary Nessel. I'm one of the high school kids that cheered when Lady Bird Johnson took down all the billboards on the national highway system and planted wildflowers. I, I detest the effect on the, um, aesthetics of the, the local area and the environment. And I particularly object to the one at Nature Wood being in the way of the view of the mountains. Having said that, I believe even more strongly in the mission of the community council. Um, yes, I'm a past president. This is an organization that has completely reinvented itself, um, in the almost two decades that we have been a city and has gone from being a basically traditional, uh, kind of a civic forum to being a un- even more unique organization in this area. Nobody else has an organization devoted to having fun and to making sure that the, the residents of the city are able to have fun generally for free. So it is incumbent on us and it's incumbent on them. And we made it quite clear when we started this, um, direct relationship with the community council, um, fifteen years ago, that they were to look for some sort of stationary funding source. And I can't, there may be other ways, like, um, cell towers. But I, but that's, I'm not fans of cell towers either. And, and quite frankly, um, if they are able to create a stable funding source by at least one of the five signs that they're proposing, then I really have to support that. I, I think, I think it is the only responsible thing for us to do.
Garrett, could I?
Please.
Way in. Um, so I, I think David and Linda, I said plenty about the community council and I think the, the effect that this would have on the organization. Um, but I, I'm gonna go back to when we approved Nature Wood. Um, and I know there was a lot of discussions, there was a subcommittee that looked at different sites and, and a lot of stuff that predated my, my time on, on the city council. Um, and so we approved the one before that, I, I believe I was on council for that one, which is the Outfront Media one. And then, um, or another Clear Channel one, and then the, the Nature Wood one was the Outfront Media. And I remember meeting with multiple members of, of the public about this. Um, I don't like billboards and, but what I ju- but what I dislike more when I'm having to choose between them is I dislike the static billboards that are in neighborhoods or along Folsom Boulevard. And I'm willing to trade that to put these things that I don't really like either on Highway 50, where they're not shining into the residences of Rancho Cordova. Um, I, David, you make a really great point too, that, you know, as, as, as these proliferate, the county can easily make the same agreement and put these north of, of Highway 50, um, in the county, where we have zero control or benefit, um, of these. But again, I despise, uh, billboards in general and, um, you know, this is a tool to getting them out of neighborhoods. Um, and, and off of Sunrise Boulevard and off of Folsom Boulevard and then other places. Um, and so kind of what I reiterated is, uh, yes, this is a good community partner, but, um, and I said it when we approved Nature Wood, was I was totally open to more digital billboards if it got rid of the, the static billboards within the city. And if this is a means towards eliminating all of them, great. Um, I, you know, Mary, I think, mentioned, you know, um, Alaska voted to remove them. I, I don't know what property rights are in, in Alaska, but, you know, regardless of what happens here, we can't just go vote and say take them down. Um, we, we don't have that power. Um, so essentially what we've done, and, and David described it in, in, in past cases, but in the case of the city, is we have a rule that the, that the operators of these billboards, of these digital billboards, have to go find the owners of, of the static billboards within the city and negotiate a price and, and take them and remove them. Um, and so to me, this is a means towards an end, which is I want to end static billboards within the city. Um, and, you know, I'll hold my nose and, and have more digital billboards on Highway 50, but I see that, that trade-off as, as a benefit to, to our neighborhoods.
All right. So staff, was that enough in, in direction?
From this standpoint of the zoning code amendments, we do need council to find the project exempt and make the recommendation to introduce and waive the first reading. On the discussion and direction items for the digital freeway sign, I have clear direction moving forward. Just need to know Stefan has direction he needs.
Okay. At this point, I'm gonna close public hearing and ask for a motion. Do I hear a motion?
That we find project exempt, um, sequo for the title community three zoning code amendment and that we introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Can I ask a question? Uh, obviously this just passed. Linda, did, did you include in your motion the, 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 the actual zoning that you wanted to choose?
No, uh, no. Remember, Darcy has separated this into three discussions.
Okay.
Uh, amendments to Title 23.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
That's the initial motion.
Okay. Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're on to regular cali- uh, regular calendar items.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, we've got.
Who's the mayor?
No, no, no.
If, if, if you could just return to, uh, the emergency shelters, I think, Councilmember Terry's question and also Darcy Galart's question was Stefan, did you get adequate enough direction? Perhaps particularly with the overlay issue, um, or other topics, um, to, to be able to confidently draft a, uh, or draft with us the ordinance?
Yes, I believe so. I think we've heard some consensus around the M1 zone, um, with some interest in looking at the ability to set managerial standards around proximity to the transportation. Um, we'll look into that. My, my initial guess is maybe not. Um, but we will look at that specific item a little bit deeper, um, and see if we can, we'll bring back the, the items to you in the future as well, um, for the final decision.
Stefan, what's the timing for that? Cause we have a deadline, right?
We do, yep. So we need to, we need to complete the rezone before we submit the final updated housing elements. So our deadline for the updated housing element is May 15. Uh, we expect we'll be ready to submit probably around April. Um, so we'd like to complete the rezone before then.
Okay. Um, I'd really like to see at least one, if not more, community outreach meetings on this subject. Um, if, if we can, between now and then, because I know you conducted some of them already and this was not necessarily a part of that discussion, just so that if, if there are members of the public that, that do want to weigh in on this, because we've had, you know, we've had a handful of comments. Obviously, you know, this is not comparatively to other things, we had lots of comments on, we're not receiving a, a ton of comments about an issue that is fairly weighty. Um, but I still think, you know, as a commitment to the process that you've already put in place for the housing element, um, is to try to reach back out to the, even those people that have shared their thoughts with you so far on the housing element.
Sure, absolutely. We will do.
Thank you.
All right. So regular calendar items. Um, can I read the announce, read the announcement for the subject?
Uh, yes. So this is in relation to, uh, a resolution approving the 2021 Rancho Cordova City Council meeting schedule. Uh, Stacy Leitner, city clerk, and, um, back in December, uh, we, um, the city clerk's office brought the 2021 Rancho Cordova City Council meeting schedule to council for approval. It was approved at that time, but, um, we have recently learned that there might be some standing, uh, conflicts with regards to the meeting's schedule for this year. And we wanted to bring it back, um, and have that discussed and revisited, um, and approved again, um, if changes aren't needed.
Can you give us an idea of the, the conflict?
It's my understanding that there is a potential conflict with Tuesdays.
With who?
With me, Siri Pulipati. Do you want me to go, Stacy? Um, so I have a standing conflict on Tuesdays, um, Linda and Donald. Um, and, um, starting the new year, a lot of our city meetings, um, are fall on Tuesdays. And, um, I'm gonna work internally to see if I can change Tuesdays or if we need to move our city meetings to Wednesdays, the ones that we can't make on Mondays.
Well, we, we normally have workshops on Tuesdays at least once a month. That's, that's been a, a practice for at least eight years I've been on council.
Mm-hmm. And I have a standing conflict on Tuesday. Tuesday evenings.
Okay. The only thing I can think of that meets on, on Wednesday is the, um, Park District once a month. And I doubt that many of us attended the Park District meetings. So-
Well, but the, the problem, the problem with, with changing that to a standing meeting, at some point when we go back to meeting at City Hall, they're gonna be in the, in the, in the same room. They, they use our, they use City Hall to meet at the same time.
That's very good point.
That's a good point.
So we have to, so we really have, you know, as, as Stacy is saying, we have two different kinds of meetings on Tuesdays, because we have the workshops, um, we just picked to do on Tuesday, um, which is completely discretionary. That could happen at any time. But then we, um, um, when the Monday is a holiday, then we just roll it over until Tuesday.
Our regular council meetings, yes.
And Donald, except maybe for January, I don't think we have any Mondays that fall on the third, any, any holidays that fall on the third Monday. And so that would, would be a conflict with the Park District. They still meet on the third Wednesday. I think the other eleven ma- months, we should be okay.
Um, and let me point out, I'm trying to work this to see if I could change my, um, uh, standing conflict as well. Um, and it involves multiple parties, so it's, it's taking a while. So if we wanna put this agenda for maybe Feb to see where it is and keep it, the Jan schedule as is, and then we can revisit this in Feb, by which time I'll have a better idea if I can move my Tuesday standing conflicts.
Yeah, I, I, that's probably best for now. Um, and if, if we end up having to reschedule one or two until you can, or if we just know that you can't, and then, but again, yeah, trying to figure out, for a lot of us that have been doing this for years, like I, I blocked those out of my calendars since I got on council. Um, and so I have other nights that are planned that are available for not having council, right? And so there are also things that have been planned, but also at some point, our facilities, you know, are, are utilized for other things. Not right now, obviously, so, you know, we can resume them whenever we want. But it could, it could create conflicts with the use of City Hall and other things that we do when the world's normal. So it probably best if you could get it to move, but I, I think it would be flexible. Um, and just keep Cyrus and Stacy abreast as far as if it, you know, if it, if it doesn't work and it's, you know, a workshop that you really wanted to be at, then maybe we, we move that subject and do something else on, on the Tuesday. Um, so I think, yeah, I, I, I think, I think it'd be best if, if you can, keep the schedule the way it is.
I absolutely will definitely, I absolutely will give it my best shot, Donald. It's like, it's a work conflict and, like I said, involves multiple companies and actually multiple countries.
No, I get it. No, I get it.
So, um, I, 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 it's a work in progress and I will, I'm working on it, so let's think on this.
If you're learning the joy of having your job and getting, and becoming a city council member and then trying to work this into your life, a lot of us either own our own companies or we have switched jobs. And when they, when, when I got hired anywhere else, it's like, this is what I have to do on these days, because I already have it. So I, I, I totally get the conundrum of the year.
So do you want to-
So given that this is, I, given that this is an action item, I'll, um, move and continue this to a date uncertain.
Yeah. Well, and we've, we've already passed it once. So that is the schedule until we decide to change it.
Okay. So we don't really have to take a vote?
Correct.
Excellent. All right. Uh, councillors, any requests for future agenda items?
Garrett, you and I discussed something this morning about meetings. Did you want to cover that?
Yep. So, um, at this point, um, uh, they would like to, or as a group would like to start having only Zoom meetings. Is that how I say it? Cyrus, back me up here. Say the exact terminology.
Yeah, I think, I think the-
Sure, I, I, I can do it. Go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I'll, okay, I'll do it. Um, so based on the fact that at this point, there's no other public body that's meeting in person, um, Garrett and I had discussed and agreed that, that going forward, we will not be having in-person meetings. Um, and City Hall will be closed during city council meetings and it will only be available through online and, and by phone. Until further notice.
David, you're a virologist. What do you think?
Well, there's no question that's safer. Um, the, the thought was just running through my mind, uh, is there anyone we would fundamentally disenfranchise or, or block from being able to participate in what we do? And I suppose there could be someone who didn't have the means of communicating, uh, although I guess at the very basis here, you can communicate just by phone with us. You don't necessarily even need internet access. Um, that, that'd be my only, that'd be my only concern.
Yeah, and I would ask the clerk that if, if we have any individual that has concerns about connectivity or figuring out that, that we should try to figure out how we can address that or assist them, um, in accessing devices or networks or whatever it is that they would need. Um, but literally as far as we can tell, we are the last government entity that is having our staff or anyone come to a physical site and meet anymore. And so for the time being, it seems like it's probably just safer for everybody, including our staff and our public, um, to interact with us online.
Seems like a great idea. I, I see Darryl in the room, uh, maybe he has a comment on would he prefer to do same? I mean, I, I see him at all council meetings. Um, would he, what does he see, any handicap or anything to do it online?
Darryl?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I will not Zoom. It's too cumbersome for me and I will not do it. So if you people want to disenfranchise me from being a participant at council meetings, that's the way to do it.
How about a telephone? Can I talk you into a telephone call, conference call? Nothing? All right. Um, okay. So at that point, we, uh, don't have any other future agenda items.
Um, I have, I have one other thing I'd like to, like to raise. And I think you're all aware of it. We've gotten, um, numerous communications, at least, well, actually, let me back up a second. During my time as mayor, I received numerous communications from Armenian families in Rancho Cordova about a resolution that they wished us to, uh, undertake. And we have normally, historically, not done any sort of, of, I'll just say like a foreign policy style resolution. Uh, twenty years ago, ten years ago, we saw a lot of cities in the, in the region sort of undertaking all sorts of debates that had nothing to do with being cities. But it strikes me after extensive communications with, uh, with Armenians in Rancho Cordova, and we do have a sizable number of Armenians in our city, that this is a, a cultural, uh, desire, I would say on their part, to, uh, and to speak up on their behalf. And so I would actually like to consider that resolution that has been, uh, suggested by, uh, local Armenians in Rancho Cordova and see if we could find a, a means of expressing on their behalf sort of concern about what's going on in, uh, in their homeland.
Okay.
David, this is the State of Ozak question?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You're saying Armenian.
That's a major part of it. There's, there's overall, I'd say like human rights issues, I suppose, that are, that are in this. Um, right of self-determination, et cetera, but-
So besides myself, is, is there a second, uh, third vote so we can put it on the agenda for future?
Yeah, I, I'd be fine with that.
Okay, excellent. All right. Anything else, guys? Linda, you usually have someone for us to adjourn for.
Mr. Mayor, I just want, may I ask a question? I want to be clear about the, the question related to, uh, closing the council-
I want to be clear about the, the question related to, uh, closing the council meetings to the public. Is that, is, is the desire to council to, uh, move ahead with that proposal?
Well, we'd have to talk about it at a, can we make the decision right now, or do we have to bring it up on another agenda item?
We can do it right now. That, that doesn't have to be an agenda item.
All right.
Item. That's, that's just, that's just the conduct of our meetings.
Linda, are you coming back into the meeting?
I'm just concerned that, um, that Daryl is not alone in his, uh, in his perspective. You know, quite frankly, uh, when we blocked our lovely quarterly newsletter that went into everybody's mailbox, we have never recuperated, recovered the, um, communication that we had, um, the potential for communication that we had with everybody in town. And yes, I'm sure we've picked up a huge number of people on social media that we would never have picked up before, but there's really truly a whole group of people over sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, whom, um, technology just doesn't work. And, um, I'm concerned. I know, I understand David's point. I mean, I, I believe me that, you know, um, we haven't been to dinner with family in good months now. But, um, I just, I don't see how the two of them sitting in the back of the room can put either themselves or staff at risk.
But let me clarify a little bit. Obviously, there are things, all of us, decisions we make every day to keep ourselves safe. Now, if you really, really, really wanted to be safe, you would only eat a perfectly nutritious diet. You would probably never drive in an automobile. Going outside, it might be more dangerous than staying inside, right? Just like, in general. So we, we constantly make decisions about risks, uh, consciously or unconsciously. So my comment was, would it be safer to not have anybody together in any rooms? Yeah, it would. But, you know, I believe that the way we, we operated last year was entirely responsible with regard to, uh, efforts not to, not to spread, uh, the virus or allow opportunities for it. We followed, you know, the best guidance we had all along. There may have been some interactions among people who came to City Hall that were not as safe as we would like, but that's kind of out of, out of city control. I guess the question now is, is there something more we should be doing in light of the current situation than we did before?
And I think that was, that was.
It's a judgment call, you know. There's no black and white here.
Yeah, and, and I think that was more of what I was suggesting, um, is the fact that, you know, obviously, we would hope that this would be temporary, and it will be temporary, in my opinion. But in light of the situation that we're in, and the fact that we have had people within City Hall contract this, and the fact that we're, you know, unlike every other government around here, we're still requiring some staff to be in person to do this. Frankly, no one else is. And, and I, you know, I, I feel for the folks that would like to, to do this in person, but I also just heard, you know, people that, that want to be involved and want to comment on things refusing to use technology that, that would give them the exact same access that they have. You know, for the safety of our staff and for the safety of our public, I think it's the appropriate thing to do at this time.
All right, Siri, what do you think?
So, um, I am, we need to be responsible adults, and we are all taking the decision to call in, make this, um, you know, long meetings from home. You know, and like we said, this is the first time ever that we did not celebrate with friends and family. We're all making this decision to stay away, stay quarantined, stay safe. So if we're trying, if this is a chance that we be more safer, not put our city staff at risk, if they can stay away, you know, in their offices or wherever. I am all for closing, um, City Hall at this time and doing this all online. Again, you're asking somebody with technology, you know. But like Linda said, and, you know, that's why I wanted Daryl's opinion, like, what, what's the, uh, what's stopping from having this Zoom call? Is it just technology, or is there anything else? But if it's me, I'm for closing City Hall.
Okay, that's three. All right. All right, then, at that point, I, can I call the meeting? I guess we'll adjourn this meeting.
Good night, everyone.
We're going to close it. There's three people that wanted it.